I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavell.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Present.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. LaFever.
Here. Would everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item of business tonight is to enter closed session. We have a suggested motion that the board will enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, and probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye. All right, if we could come back to order, we'll continue on with our meeting. We have a suggested motion that the board return to open session. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye. Our first item of business is recognitions. I'd like to turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Cates.
Good evening and welcome to everyone here tonight. Every high school student who prepares for college is aware of the importance placed on standardized college entrance exams, including the American College Test, what we all know as the ACT. The highest possible composite score a student can earn on the ACT is a 36. Statistically, less than one-tenth of 1% of students taking the ACT achieve the highest score. For over 20 years, the Board of Education has recognized students who have achieved the highest possible score of 36 on the ACT, and tonight we are excited to recognize and honor 11 students from District 211 who have achieved this remarkable accomplishment. With the addition of these 11 students, District 211 now has had a total of 139 students who have reached this outstanding achievement. On behalf of the Board of Education, in High School District 211, I'd like to congratulate our students and their families. We have a certificate for each student that Board President Mr. Bablu Faver will present in just a moment. Our students will each be introduced by a sponsor chosen by the student. Sponsors, please follow this order. We'll begin with Conant High School math teacher, Rich Cortez, who has two students to introduce. Then moving to Fremd High School, English teacher Christie O'Donnell will introduce us to two students. Follow up math teacher Chris Grittoni, math teacher Rob Higgins, science teacher Kelly Flores, math teacher Shannon Dennehy, and then science teacher Rebecca Odette. Rich?
Good evening. I'm lucky enough to introduce both of our Conant perfect ACTs, and as Dr. Cates just mentioned, it is a big honor to do this, and he mentioned less than one-tenth of 1%. Just to put that in numbers, there's over 2 million kids that take the ACT nationwide every year, and that's less than 4,000 kids that get this honor. So it is amazing to be honored and to have these kids achieve that score. So I'd like to call up Ashay Perik first. Come on up. Ashay is accompanied by his parents, Heran and Kajal Perik. I've been lucky enough to know Ashay for three years. Ashay is a junior, and I've had Ashay in class three years straight. I'm also lucky enough to be his math team coach and sponsor for CompSci Kids, so I've gotten to know him quite well. Needless to say, he's an amazing, amazing student. He is the kid that everyone in class goes to constantly for everything, so the kids are used to relying on him. He's also had a slew of different awards. I'm going to read just a few things that he's done over the years. For math team, he's placed at regionals. He's actually, he's helped our team greatly get down to state. He's always been one of the top students at his level. Last year, for the Code 211 Hackathon, which is coming up very soon again this year, he won first place as a CompSci student. I'm very proud of that. He was also, as a CompSci student, awarded second place in the Congressional App Challenge this year, which is the entire region for kids from all over the schools. So that was amazing. And then this year, he's also taken on the effort of planning the entire Code 211 Hackathon, and along with that, he's also planned other Hackathons and gotten quite a few. So you can tell that computer science is his thing, which I'm extremely proud of. As a junior, he's got a long ways to decide what he wants to do. I was just asking him today a little bit, "So where are you going to go to college?" And he had the perfect answer, and that's, "I don't know." And as a junior, that's perfect, because he's got so many possibilities out there that he should not limit himself at all. But the one thing he does know is that he does want to go into computer science, and he wants to learn something about artificial intelligence, and I can bet that he's going to be a name that you're going to see in the newspaper at some point, dealing with some technology coming up. So congratulations, Ashay. Next, I'd like to call up Liz Zhang. Liz is here with her parents, Janet and Henry Zhang, and I've known Liz for four years, which is also very cool to have the same student constantly that you get to see. I've had her for three years in class, math team, of course, and then CompSci Kids, which I'll explain in a second. Liz has done an amazing job at Conant High School in everything she's ever done. Obviously, perfect grades, amazing test scores, perfect ACT. I should mention that both of these students only ever took the ACT once. They were not the students that practiced over and over. It was just one time, perfect, they're done. So that's pretty amazing. A few of her accomplishments, well, actually, let me mention college real quick. So she's, as a senior, of course, applying for colleges and getting accepted into quite a few. Just to give you an idea of her strengths, here's a few of the colleges she's applied to this year. U of I, Computer Science, which is one of the top programs to get into in the country, MIT, Caltech, Cornell, Berkeley. So this gives you an idea of what kind of a student that Liz is. And the major that she's chosen is two of the most difficult things put together that I didn't even know was a major until she told me it was, and it's called Engineering Physics. I thought they were always separate, but they're putting them together now, and that's what Liz wants to do for her career. To give you an idea of the kinds of things that she's done over her four years at Conant, last year, as a junior, she helped start the public forum debate team at Conant. Before that, there was a single debate. Now there's two separate debate teams. She's qualified for state for the Science Olympiad, qualified for state for math team, multiple perfects on math team, which most kids are happy to get one, and she gets them a bunch. She's also our head of our honors math team, I like to call it, and essentially, that means that she's the one that puts together practices, along with one of her friends, and she takes it on herself to instruct a lot of the younger kids on how to do better at these kinds of problems. And they plan the practices, they plan the problems, they plan it all themselves, and she's the head of that. And then the other thing that I'm extremely proud of is she's my co-president for our CompSci Kids, which is where we bring in little kids, grades 1 through 8, to Conant High School, to learn computer science, and part of her efforts leads to the number of kids we have, and this year, so far, as of the next session, we'll introduce almost 300 students to computer science at Conant, and she's a major, major part of that. So I'm extremely proud of Liz, and I'm honored to help present her to you. Thank you.
I'd like to present Stella Chung and her mom, Hemi Park. It is my honor to introduce and recognize Stella for the perfect, for the achievement of a perfect ACT. To give an idea of the person Stella is, she is a second-degree black belt in Taekwondo, but I also like to think of her as a second-degree black belt in life. She wrote a 50-page story for an extra-credit writing assignment, and I don't know how that's humanly possible for her to do, given her maxed-out schedule and extracurriculars, because at the same time, Stella was also working on a literary research paper and studying for a multi-variable calculus college midterm. But Stella's 50-page story was all about her real-life experience of an elaborate, months-long practical joke a friend played on her, where Stella constantly decrypted codes and ciphers in an attempt to reveal the practical joker's identity. The person was apparently and pretty obviously her friend, so Stella may not have a future in detective work, but she obviously has the patience and curiosity required for just about anything. In fact, she could be a lawyer, because during a mock trial in class one day, Stella successfully defended the client and concluded by saying, "He was only human." When a student jokingly tried to put me on trial, Stella defended me, saying, "Miss Odie is only human." So if I ever need legal help, I would want Stella as my lawyer, because she's not human. This girl has to be superhuman because of all she accomplishes. But Stella, I want you to know that even if you are only human, like the rest of us, you're still enough, because you're so truly special in so many ways outside of your testing ability. In fact, I look up to you, Stella, and it has nothing to do with how brilliant you are. It has everything to do with your creativity, ability to think and empathize with others, as well as your ability to make me and everyone around you laugh. So congratulations to your parents, your mom here, for raising a superhuman being, and congratulations to you for everything you continue to achieve. So I'd like to present Gina Kang and her parents, Cindy and James Kang. It is my honor to introduce and recognize Gina for the outstanding achievement of scoring a composite score of 36 on the ACT. I didn't really change that up, but the rest of it I changed, so. Gina once said to me through email, "Miss Odie, I would eat all of Neptune for you." The statement was beside a meme, and because I'm old, the reference was completely lost on me, but at the same time, I got it. And Gina, I want you to know that I would eat all of Neptune and the sun for you, because if I could clone Gina, I would. If I could bottle and sell her energy, I would. In fact, I would sneak secret Gina juice in the Fremd water fountain, so that the energy fizzing through the walls would be palpable, and everyone would share the wonder, curiosity, and true love Gina has for learning. Gina has yelled in frustration at characters, wrung her aunt hands in the air for certain plotlines, and bounced in her seat, waiting for other people to catch up in the reading, so she could spill her thoughts all over the room, like, "This is how I think of Gina." Oh! Like, that's right, Gina? Okay. Picture a toddler in the toy aisle at Target, or me and Barnes &amp; Noble, that is Gina in English class. She reads classics like Kafka's Metamorphosis and Marquez's 100 Years of Solitude for fun. She never complains, she is kind, she is authentic, she is hysterical, she is uniquely incredible. Her impact on a classroom and a classroom teacher is indescribable, and more importantly, her heart is probably 100 times bigger than her perfect 36 brain. And in a world where people value being big-brained, Gina is also someone to admire for her galactic heart. Thank you for being so wondrously amazing in every way. Thank you for being the English nerd that warms my heart second hour with your endless optimism and enthusiasm, and congrats again.
Chris?
It is an honor for me to introduce Gabe Claussen to the District 211 Board of Education for scoring a 36 on the ACT. Gabe is joined this evening by his dad, Brian. I have been Gabe's math team coach for the past three years, and this year, I am also his multi-variable calculus teacher. Gabe is a talented mathematician, one of the stars of the math team, and he is one of the most brilliant and driven students I have ever had the privilege of teaching. Gabe is the student who will read every math article I post to Schoology, and that's a lot of them, and will solve every challenge problem I propose to the class, not because he's motivated by grades or extra credit, but because he has a passion for learning. Beyond Gabe's many talents and achievements, he's also a great person that his peers and his teachers love to be around. Gabe has a unique ability to bring his sense of humor, his quick wit, and creativity into many aspects of his life. For example, Gabe's classmates probably would not be surprised if, say, he were to use a discrete Fourier transform containing over 500 terms to ask a date's to homecoming. Nor would they, oh, not a date, oh. Nor would they be surprised if he also asked this date to first locate a single syntax error in his code before she could see the output of the homecoming proposal code. Lest it sounds like I'm exaggerating, I actually got permission from his homecoming date to bring the poster tonight. If you look closely enough, of course, she did find and correct the syntax error. And then Gabe, turn it around. In this poster, you can see Gabe's mathematical brilliance, his sense of humor, and his fun-loving nature all at once. Gabe, I'm so proud of your achievement on the ACT, and I'm also very excited to hear about the many successes and achievements you are going to continue to have during your time at Fremd and beyond. Congratulations.
Good evening. I have a great one for you tonight. Her name's Cassie Seaver. Her parents are Brian and Tracy. Raise your hands. There you go. You know you're on the downhill slide of your career when you need cheaters for 24 font? So, where you go. So, good evening, school board. I said I have a great one for you tonight. I am fortunate tonight to introduce an amazing young lady named Cassie Seaver. I am lucky to have taught Cassie in two of my classes and thankful to have Cassie as a student intern this year. As a student, Cassie demonstrated impeccable character, a love for learning, an unconditional willingness to support her peers, and she also provided mathematical clarity on my occasional missteps in my class. Yes, you did. As a student intern this year, Cassie's taught very complicated calculus BC lessons in front of her peers and performed as if she was a seasoned and confident teacher. Her natural ability in front of the classroom is not a talent that will be a flash in the pan, for Cassie is going to college to become a high school math teacher. Bless your soul. So, Dr. Small, in four years, highest recommendation, right here. Cassie, thank you for being one in a million students. Thank you for being an amazing student, but most importantly, thank you for being you. Congratulations.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kelly Flores, and I work at Fremd. I'm Shreya's anatomy teacher, so I want to present her tonight. So here I am tonight, presenting to you Shreya Seetherum for achieving the highest possible score on the ACT. I also would like to introduce and recognize her mother, father, and younger brother, there he is, who are here tonight in support of Shreya on her outstanding accomplishment. So if they can please be, if they could please stand and be recognized.
Yeah, thank you for standing. So I have had the honor of having Shreya this year in my human anatomy and physiology class. From the start, Shreya has been able to set herself apart from the others in a way that has caught my attention, and I would like to share some of her accomplishments in her tenure at Fremd. So she is the captain of the Scholastic Bull, treasurer of HOSA, and is actively involved with Science Bowl and the swim team, all while maintaining straight A's and enduring a very rigorous AP-sprinkled schedule. I'm very proud of Shreya's accomplishments, not just because I'm her teacher, but because she exudes a passion for stamping her female presence in the field of STEM, and I don't think there is anyone to stop her. Shreya is inspired by people who break down barriers and use their knowledge and power to benefit the good of others, and I know Shreya will follow in their footsteps. Shreya, I'm really proud of you and your accomplishments, including earning that ACT, 36 on the ACT. So I believe there's nothing in this life you can't accomplish. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Shannon Dennehy, and I am here tonight to introduce Rachel Yi. Rachel, come on up.
And I'd also like to recognize her parents, Mr. Jimmy Yi and Mrs. Alice Chan. I've had the pleasure of being Rachel's computer science teacher this year and have really gotten to know her not only as a brilliant student, but as just a really kind and caring young lady. Today in class, I was talking with her and some of her peers and just kind of, you know, shooting the breeze, asking them, "So what kind of activities are you in?" And it was like her fan club erupted, and everybody was talking about, "Oh, well, don't forget about this, and don't forget about this, and don't forget about this." And I knew her as a wonderful student and a wonderful computer programmer and a great friend and a kind heart, and the more that everybody talked about her, the more that I realized just how much I still hadn't seen. And it was very exciting. Some of the things that I heard more about was just how wonderful she is at Badman and how she has placed at state, and also even competed at the International Pan Am Junior Competition, which was very exciting to hear about, and then how she has been involved with BPA and newspaper and HOSA and debate, and how she's in band, and they were talking about how she'll bangs on everything with percussion, and we were joking about how she bangs that birdie and she bangs the drums, and we were just having a good old time. And it's just, it's really nice to see somebody who is as smart and as sweet as she is also find time for everything else in life, and to have so many people around her just be her fan club. So I am part of your fan club, and I'm honored to be here tonight, and I'm very proud of you, and I'm excited to hear what comes of the future. So congratulations, Anne.
Good evening. It's a privilege to speak tonight to recognize Fremd senior Max Wexley for earning a perfect score on the ACT. Max is joined tonight by his parents, Matthew and Christine Wexley. If they could please stand up and be recognized. Last year, Max was in one of the best classes at Fremd, my eighth-period AP physics class. Even from the first week of class, Max stood out as such a fun and personable student. Every single day, he had a great attitude and would show up to class with a smile on his face, and yes, even on test days, he was smiling. Max is also a natural leader. When we would do a small group activity, he would always try to help everyone understand the topics we were learning and would never, never not answer any question that he was asked. When I was asked to give a short speech to describe Max, I thought I would, the school board would like to know what his peers had to say about him, and I asked several students to describe Max, and this is what they had to say. Nice, easy to talk to, great basketball player, hard-working, caring, smart, role model. Most of these descriptions were repeated by all the students I asked, and this is what makes Max such an incredible individual. Not only does he excel in academics and athletics, but he's also beloved by his peers. In my 13 years teaching at Fremd, Max is truly the most outstanding student I've had the privilege of teaching. Fremd is so lucky to have him on campus, and I know he's going to continue to do, continue to achieve amazing accomplishments. Max's passion is seen through his actions, and his perfect score on the ACT attests to his hard work and dedication. Congratulations to you, Max.
This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Mark Kovak to the podium to recognize my outstanding students, to be assisted by Board President Bablu Faver.
Good evening, board, Dr. Cates, administrators, faculty, and honored guests. For more than 60 years, the National Merit Scholarship Program has been recognizing and honoring our country's most academically talented students. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce a group of District 211 students from the class of 2021 who have distinguished themselves as National Merit Scholars. The National Merit Scholarship Competition for these students began last October during their junior year when they completed the Preliminary Scholastic Aptitude Test, commonly called the PSAT, along with about 1.6 million other American high school students. And based on that assessment, 16,000 students across the country received recognition from the college board as semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Competition. These District 211 students are among those semifinalists and are among the top 1% of students in the country. Tonight, each of these students will be presented with District 211's Robert Creek Excellence Award. This award is named in honor of Robert Creek, who served as District 211 Board of Education member for 20 years, 19 of those as board president. Mr. Creek distinguished himself by promoting a consistent vision of student and teacher excellence in District 211. I would like to ask our board president to step forward and assist me, and students, as I announce your name, I would ask that you please step forward to the podium to accept your recognition. And I also ask parents of these students to stand as I announce their names and be recognized while they receive their award. As you can imagine, many of the students that are on this list are highly involved in our schools and our communities, and some of the students are unable to join us tonight due to other responsibilities. I'm going to announce all of our students' names this evening out of respect for this achievement, and bear with me as we encounter a few students who may not be with us. Sahel Ahmed from Conant High School. Ashika Arashwat from Fremd High School. Ella Burns from Fremd High School. Cindy Kai from Fremd. Sognik Chakabrook Mahdi from Fremd. Justin Chang from Fremd High School. Alice Chen from Fremd High School. Anmal Desai from Fremd High School. Samantha Ernst, Conant High School. Thomas Philippic from Fremd High School. Sophia G. from Fremd High School. Nithika Karthakeen from Fremd High School. Emma Kadovich from Fremd High School. Andrew Kim from Fremd High School. Matthew Kim from Fremd High School. Varsha Krishnan from Fremd High School. Guinevere Madsen, Hoffman Estates High School. Andrew Meles, Conant High School. Sophia Oliver from Fremd High School. Ria Patel, Conant High School. Eileen Peng from Fremd High School. Vididia Prathap from Fremd High School. Jack Reamer from Fremd High School. Jack Reamer Fremd High School. Inka Chesnowska Hoffman Estates High School. Ethan Schillinger Fremd High School. Parita Shah Hoffman Estates High School. Andrew Sun Fremd High School. Nikhil Shwaram Fremd High School. Ashish Subramanian Hoffman Estates High School. Ayushi Trappithi Fremd High School. Deepan Vellapalli Fremd High School. Caitlin Wong Fremd High School. Sharon Wu Fremd High School. Andrew Yin Fremd High School. Elizabeth Zhang Conant High School. And our final student, Kylie Zhang from Fremd is not here this evening. I congratulate each of these students and their families on this outstanding accomplishment and the exciting opportunities that are ahead of them. Thank you.
This time, I'd like to ask Mike Karas to please come forward. Project Lead the Way, a nonprofit organization that provides transformative learning experiences for pre-kindergarten through 12th grade students and teachers across the country, announced its outstanding teacher award recipients for 2019-2020 during the organization's national conference this past November. To be considered for an outstanding teacher award, nominees must demonstrate a strong record of instruction that aligns with the program's goals, which include inspiring and empowering students as well as using innovative teaching methods to engage students in activity, project, and problem-solving-based learning. Tonight is my pleasure to announce that Fremd High School Applied Technology Teacher, Mike Karas, was only one of 21 teachers nationwide to receive this award in the engineering category. Mike has been with Fremd High School for nearly 20 years, starting as a part-time auditorium manager in 2001, and then making the transition to full-time when he became part of Fremd High School's Applied Technology Department in 2006. In addition to recognizing Mike tonight for being an outstanding teacher, we would like to congratulate him on the birth of his son Nicholas, who was born on Saturday. On behalf of the Board of Education and Fremd High School community, congratulations, Mike, on this outstanding honor. Thank you for engaging and inspiring our next generation of engineers. And Board President Babu Faver has a certificate for you tonight. This time, I'd like to ask Dr. and Mrs. Merrick to please come forward. Sudden cardiac death tragically claims the lives of more than 60 young adults in the United States each week. Young Hearts for Life has been a leader in the Chicago medical community, helping to combat this issue. Its Youth Heart Screening Program is the largest in the country and is well-known for its unique model using trained community volunteers to deliver efficient cardiac screenings. Since its inception in 2006, Young Hearts for Life has provided cardiac screenings to help prevent otherwise undetected heart conditions to approximately 220,000 students at no charge to students or families. Following the death of Fremd High School graduate Jared Hardy in 2009 from a genetic heart condition and sudden cardiac arrest, Jared's mother, Ruth Jensen, and her foundation, the Jared Joshua Hardy Charities, worked to raise funds to offer these heart screenings to District 211 students. This board is grateful to have been able to recognize Ruth Jensen for her contributions before she passed in 2018. Ruth's vision continues strong. Since 2016, Young Hearts for Life has screened students in all District 211 schools, providing nearly 11,000 screenings at no charge to students or families. More importantly, of those 11,000 screenings, 69 students with previously undetected heart conditions were identified for further testing or intervention. Tonight, we are joined by Young Hearts for Life founder, Dr. Joseph Merrick, and his wife, Program Director Kathy Merrick. On behalf of the Board of Education and our entire District 211 community, I'd like to thank you both for your entire work to provide Young Hearts for Life and all that you've done to help our students and our families. Please come forward to receive a certificate
It's great to have the opportunity to recognize everyone here tonight for your wonderful accomplishments. We're going to pause for a few minutes to allow you to get some pictures, if you'd like, before we continue on with the business portion of our meeting. Thank you all very much for coming tonight. Okay, if we could come back to order, we're going to continue on with the meeting. Our next item of business is public comments and hearings. First, we'll have public comments. We have had a couple of people that did sign up to address the board. The first person is Robbie Volkmer. Do you please come to
Hi, my name is Robbie Volkmer, and I'm going to discuss why I feel there is a decreasing focus on academics in District 211. Unfortunately, I am only allotted five minutes of speaking time, but I probably have over six minutes of examples, so I will be cutting my speech short this evening and will forward my complete presentation via email. Most of my examples and speech will be focused on Schaumburg High School, as this has been the majority of my encounters the past five years, although I am a Hoffman Estates High School alumni. Now, I will give some examples I feel justify my concern. First off, there are no longer class rankings nor valedictorians at any District 211 high schools despite having non-weighted and weighted GPAs. The next example is one I'm still having a difficult time wrapping my head around. It took Schaumburg High School seven years to update their academic scholar wall near the main entrance. It hadn't been updated since 2011. Not a single staff member nor administrator noticed in seven years. However, new digital monitors outside the gym were installed, which proudly displayed three sport athletes. As if that wasn't bad enough, Hoffman Estates High School doesn't even have an academic scholar wall. In case you're not aware, in order for a student to obtain academic scholar status, they must have at least a 3.9 non-weighted or 4.7 weighted GPA for seven out of the eight high school semesters. A huge accomplishment and not easily achieved. In recognition of this great accomplishment, the school also used to have an academic scholar banquet dinner, where parents and a selected staff member were invited to attend. A nice booklet highlighting each student's academic achievements was also included. This dinner was removed several years ago and replaced with a breakfast in the media center, and parents are no longer included. The booklet has also disappeared. The school claimed they no longer had the funds to support the dinner and booklet, but the girls' bowling team and families were treated to dinner when they went to State back in 2018. And how many thousands of dollars are spent in athletics? But we have to make cutbacks for our brightest students? There is also minimal focus and attention for the top tier of students in helping them to achieve such accomplishments like tonight with the National Merit semifinalists via the PSAT MSQWAT. This test is administered during a student's junior year of high school. This can translate into huge scholarships obtained and can also be utilized as a great bargaining chip if needed. My own personal story. My oldest only obtained commended National Merit Scholar. I say only not to minimize the accomplishment, but if she had received National Merit Scholarship finalist, she would have received an additional $50,000 from the university, from Arizona's State University, where she currently attends. Perhaps had her high school clearly explained the importance and encouraged and helped students to prepare for this test, maybe she would have achieved National Merit Scholarship finalist like those present this evening. Also to note, Schaumburg High School has not had a single National Merit Scholar semifinalist for two years. When I asked a counselor at Schaumburg High School why they weren't, why there weren't additional resources and focus for these top-tier students, I was told, "Because it's only 1% to 3% of the student population." However, I would like to know how much time and money was spent dealing with the approximate 0.6% of the population regarding the recent transgender issue. Our booster club is asked to consider reducing academic scholarship amounts every year because the money doesn't stay in the building. We used to give $15,000 in scholarships to senior students, and now we're down to $10,000 despite having the funding. Schaumburg Athletic Department received approximately $225,000 this school year from District 211, and the principal received $40,000. Many line items on the school budget are extremely vague. Line items like copies, registrations were listed. When I asked for further clarification regarding the principal's budget, I did not receive it. In addition, each high school received a budget allocation of $135 per student plus a flat amount of $310,000. But we have no money to truly honor academic achievers? I'm asking you, the Board and administrators, to please stop being sidetracked and stay focused with the main purpose of school, academics. You will be turning over a new leaf soon with a new superintendent and Schaumburg High School with a new principal. I'm asking you to make it all your New Year's resolution and get back on track and make academics a priority at all five high schools.
The end of your time.
Again, I'm cutting my presentation short, but thank you for your time and listening ears this evening. I look forward to any feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am here tonight to address this D-211 School Board following your passage of the Equal Education Opportunities Policy on November 14, 2019. I stand boldly before you in my condemnation of this ludicrous policy and of those of you who voted to adopt it. One does not need to be a lawyer or a psychologist to understand that people who identify with a gender that does not correspond with their natural anatomy are not victims of discrimination. They are victims of a psychological disorder. These individuals do not need access to opposite-sex locker rooms. They need therapy. And the other children do not need to be subject to this foolishness. You had an opportunity to create a solution in harmony with the voice of the community that would have served the best interests of all concerned, but instead, five of you chose to redefine locker room, the locker room environment at the emotional expense of our kids. Mr. Kramer and Mr. Dombrowski, on behalf of the community, I would like to thank you for standing up like men in opposition to Dr. Kates' policy. You deserve our respect for demonstrating to your male counterparts on this board what it means to be men with the moral conviction and courage to take a public stand against those who seek to undermine our community with subterfuge. Mr. LaFever and Mr. Rosenblum, as men, you have a more, you have a responsibility to be, to be leaders of your families and to set standards of decency in this community. You have a duty to protect your children and your family from progressive ideology that is undermining these standards. By supporting Dr. Kates' radical policy, you have failed in your duties and you have betrayed the trust of this community. Frankly speaking, you are disgraceful examples of men, and you should both resign from this School Board and hang your heads in shame. Mr. Young, I heard you tell your victimhood story during the November meeting. Your bio on the D-211 website tells a different story. A story of someone who is a well-to-do business owner with advanced degrees and a successful professional career. To use your race to promote a false victimhood narrative is shameful. The real victims here are the students whose right to privacy is being denied by you. Like the other so-called men I named before you, you are, you are a disgrace to manhood, to this community, and you should resign from this Board and hang your head in shame. Ms. Klimkowitz, I heard you cite your position as a mother and a grandmother in defense of your vote. The mothers and grandmothers that I know, including my own, are blessed by almighty God with an instinct to protect children. Evidently, God has forsaken you of this blessing because not only have you failed to protect them, you have used your position to put them in harm's way. You are a disgrace to motherhood, a discredit to this community, and you should be ashamed of yourself. I request that you resign from this Board and never again enter into the service of our community or the service of our children. Ms. Cavill, I suspect that you are neither a mother or a grandmother. What is clear to me is that you are a typical social justice warrior utterly ignorant of what civil rights are. Let me take this brief moment to give you a much-needed summary education on this subject. Civil rights give people the ability to participate equally in the political process and civil institutions of our society. What they are not is an avenue for activists like you to impose your ugly, left-wing ideology upon the good people of this community. So when you say civil rights are not up for a vote, that may sound good to your radical associates in attendance at the Board meetings, but in reality, it demonstrates your utter lack of understanding of what constitutes a right. In my view, you are a danger to our children, our traditional values, and I am 100% committed with all my energy and financial resources
You have one more minute.
...to getting you off this School Board and out of any involvement of District 211 affairs. You are not only a disgrace to this community, you are a disgrace to humanity. Finally, Dr. Kates, I believe you have perpetrated a fraud in this community. From the moment I became aware of you, I had a deep sense that something is very wrong with you. I believe that you misled the people about who you really are and that the passage of this policy was part of your plan from the beginning. The fact that you are superintendent of our school district is a crisis in this community. Like Ms. Cavill, you represent a grave threat to the well-being of our children, and you must be ousted from your position. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item of business is the Residential Construction Employers Council. Dr. Kates?
Here to make comments, but also later on the agenda, you'll see a generous donation from this organization, and we're grateful for your contributions.
Thank you for inviting us again this year to your January Board Meeting. I'm Nualdi Ambrosio from Monarch Construction. Joining me this evening is Mike Forrest from RB Construction, Tony and Doris Porcaccio from Porcaccio Painting and Drywall, Kathy Kirin, RCEC. On behalf of the RCEC Board of Directors, we would like to thank our membership for coming together and donating over $10,000 of goods and monetary donations to the District 211. District 211's Building Trade Program offers an alternative career path for the students who feel college may not be the right choice for them. Our industry is in huge demand for skilled trades people, and we are hoping to encourage the next generation to consider the trades when they are choosing their path of career. We look forward to working with Mark, Chris, and Todd again this year. Thank you again for recognizing RCEC.
All right, our next item of business is the public hearing on renewal of the third-party contract with Top Driver Acquisition LLC for Behind-the-Wheel Services for Driver Education and recommendation to approve renewal of Third-Party Driver Education Behind-the-Wheel Services Agreement with Top Driver Acquisition LLC for the 2020, 2021, and 2021, 2022 school years.
So moved.
We have three different motions that we'll address. The first one is that the Board of Education will open the public hearing required by Section 27-24.2 of the Illinois School Code on the proposal to renew its contract with Top Driver Acquisition LLC, Commercial Driver Training School, to provide behind-the-wheel services for driver education training to District 211 students for the 2020, 2021, and 2021, 2022 school years. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the hearing is now open. Do we have anyone that would like to address the Board of Education regarding this topic? Okay, if not, that will bring us to our second suggested motion. The motion is- The motion is that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to renew the agreement for third-party driver education services with Top Driver Acquisition LLC as permitted in the current agreement for the 2020, 2021, and 2021, 2022 school years. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion here?
Discussion?
Yes.
Just a couple of questions. The, in general, I'm not in favor of no-bid contracts, but I don't know the process here. Is this the lowest bidder? Gets the, if there were a bid, is it the lowest bidder or is it, is an RFP put out and we get proposals and we can evaluate them based on merit? Sometimes it's worth paying a little bit more to get better service and I don't know what the case is right here.
Sure, so when we first adopted this service two years ago, we did an extensive contact with all of the local companies. And because there are a variety of requirements, like any bid, it has certain specifications. So the specifications in this instance call for all of the people who are going to be delivering this instruction in our Behind-the-Wheel program to be ISBE-certified teachers. A lot of the third-party driver education programs don't have as many teachers as we would need. So following an extensive first-round informational session, if you will, there were two companies that submitted proposals. When, again, they further vetted how many students we were going to have, how many sections we were going to have, one of those proposals, the company withdrew itself. So it is a very precise, specific set of demands that are placed on the people to provide the service, and we were fortunate to be able to secure one.
So you had, previously you had two bidders and one said, "We really can't do the job", so you ended up... And in your opinion, are there any other companies that could actually handle the contract right now?
With the number of certified teachers, that is not how they organize themselves. I would also add that this group of teachers has now familiarized themselves entirely within our system to our safety measures, our way of operations. Dr. Small has a weekly consultation with the company. It is a very tightly woven relationship that we have.
Thank you.
Okay, so when we first initiated this, the state law was relatively new. It would have been passed within six months of us executing this contract. So it would be understandable that we'd only receive maybe two responses as it takes a little bit of time to ramp up. We didn't reach out then since that first contract was executed. So in the last two years, if there's a company out there that's ramped up with ISBE-certified teachers or have drivers that have become ISBE-certified, we're not aware.
We did not issue a bid.
Okay, and we didn't solicitate any information from any other eligible potential bidders, correct?
We didn't solicit a bid.
Okay, thank you.
How is the process working? How is everything falling into place? Are things going smoothly? Are there rough patches?
Sure, sure, I'll let Dr. Small talk through the deliveries.
So throughout the weekly conversations that we've had in the past year in terms of making sure that their expectations and our expectations match, it's actually gone very well. Top Driver management is a wonderful group to work with. They are very open to making changes as we would need in terms of the curriculum. This past year, per legislation requirements, we were to put in an evaluation system. I worked with Top Driver to set up a documentation that is parallel to what our teachers do but appropriate for a Behind-the-Wheel instructor, and that is going into play this year.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. All right, this brings us to our third suggested motion. That the Board of Education close the public hearing on the proposal to renew its contract with Top Driver Acquisition LLC, Commercial Driver Training School for Behind-the-Wheel Services for Driver Education Training to District 211 students for the 2020, 2021, and 2021, 2022 school years. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The hearing is now closed. That will bring us to presentations. We have a presentation on Career Development Experiences. Dr. Cates?
We're very pleased to present you with information this evening that is part of the continued development and deepening, embedding of career pathways in our courses. Our Career Pathways Program serves not only students to have advantages for pursuing their pursuits after high school, but also to prepare, as you heard from a group just presented a nice donation to us, preparing workforce and having our students prepare to contribute to the local community businesses and, you know, betterment of the entire community. Then I'm going to let Dr. Small describe the presentation and introduce some wonderful people to us.
Thank you, Dr. Cates. I have three people joining me to share with you some of our career development experiences that we have going on right now as well as ones that we plan to in the future. J.C. Brown is a counselor from Conant High School. Dr. Danielle Hauser is our Director of Instructional Improvement. And Jan Brotman is our District 211 Internship Coordinator as well as the Career Advisor at Fremd High School. During the four years that our students spend with us, they have a lot of time to decide what choices they're going to make when they leave us upon graduation. The ideas of a 14-year-old are sometimes vastly different from the 18-year-old as they mature, grow in terms of their passions and their skills, and hopefully prepare for what they will do when they leave us along the way. Our comprehensive high schools are designed to support those students across those four years, including the curriculum that is designed for exploration, whether they're going into a college major or directly into a career. Our pathways are designed to help them find their passions and skills, especially in play areas that they might not have considered in the past. As they grow into their future plans, these various pathways are enhanced by career development experiences. At the top box are the career development experiences that we've had in our district for many years. Our counselors, our specialized transition services, our career treks and field trips actually to job sites, bringing guest speakers in, when our students go out to do community service and work side-by-side in the industry, our work program where students have the opportunity to leave school early to go to work, as well as part-time employment that they might be doing during the school year as well as in the summer. The bottom box represents the newer career development pathways that have come forward in the past few years. Our pathway coursework, allowing our students to have a concerted focus on what they might want to study or explore. Our internships and team-based challenge that you'll hear more about this evening, as well as the industry credentials where a student is working during high school to earn a, an official industry credential that is recognized in their career when they leave us, that they can present via their resume or through an interview process to get a step up in that consideration for a job, as well as our District 211 Career Expo, which will be running this year at Fremd High School on February 27th. We welcome you to join us, as well as if you have any company connections that haven't signed up with us, we certainly have a few more tables available for that. The support teams that help our students prepare for their choices along the way certainly involve a myriad of all these people, including our career advisors, our counselors, our teachers, and our industry partners, such as who you saw here tonight. Our Perkins and our CTEI funding is our federal and state money, which allows us to truly enhance our school classrooms. The manufacturing equipment, our culinary arts programs, all of these career-based situations are truly supported by our state and federal money in the Perkins and CTEI funding, as well as, for example, our career advisors are supported via our CTEI funding to help ensure that our students are thinking through options during high school so that they have a possible direction when they leave us. As career advisors, we have the unique opportunity to accompany students to many different workplaces as they explore careers firsthand. The benefits are tangible almost immediately. Students develop and build workplace skills, they gain inspiration for a career choice or college major, perhaps decide they don't want to do something which is just as important. They connect with mentors, they apply their classroom knowledge outside the classroom, they experience workplace expectations, they network, we're giving them some social capital that they wouldn't otherwise have. They acquire an edge on others in the job market, meaning they give, we give them something to talk about in a job interview and build a robust resume. They gain confidence. One example is Samantha, she was a senior at Palatine a couple of years ago. She went on a career trek to Hydroforce, which is a manufacturing company in Lincolnshire. The team of machinists that took the kids around were so impressed by the kids' knowledge about the machines that they asked, "Could they come to Palatine High School and see what the kids were learning in school?". So they went to Palatine High School and Samantha showed them how she used the machines and things that she made, and they were so impressed, they pretty much hired her on the spot for an internship. She went that next summer, she did the internship, she enjoyed it so much, they offered to pay for her for two years at Harper. After the two years at Harper and she worked part-time with them, she wanted to be an engineer, so they said, "Sure". So they ended up paying two more years for her to go to NIU and get her engineering degree, bachelor's degree at Northern, and she's now going to have a full-time job at Hydroforce as an engineer. We are so fortunate to have so many companies that are willing to step up and give our students career development experiences. This slide just shows a sample of some of the businesses that we are able to work with. We try to find companies that cover all different 16 career clusters. Another example is Purnay. He's a senior at Fremd this year. He did the medical internship workshop last summer and was given three days in Dr. Boaz's office. Dr. Boaz is a pediatric pulmonologist. He had such a good time with Purnay that he offered him to come back in the fall and they did some research, and now they published a paper. Purnay is now a named author in a medical paper, and he's going with Dr. Boaz to present this at a national pediatric pulmonary conference. It's so cool for him, and now he's also interviewing for several different six-year med programs. So these are just a few examples of some life-changing experiences that we've been able to connect students with.
Our students have thousands of careers to choose from after they graduate from high school. In order to help narrow down those thousands of careers to that perfect career for our students, we use our District 211 Career Cluster website to help them narrow down that list. Up here, you'll see 16 career clusters, and under each career cluster, students can explore a list of careers within as well as college majors. Students can also see coursework related to that career cluster that's available to them in each of their buildings. And then further, they can see clubs and activities after school they can join that relate to that cluster. A perfect example of a student for the career clusters is Tim. Tim was a culinary student at Conant who graduated a few years ago. Tim took Culinary 1, Culinary 2, Practices in Entrepreneurship, and Food Standards and Sanitation. While in these classes, Tim participated in a contest with Fredo's, another great community business partner with us, and won the pizza-making competition with Fredo's. This led to Tim receiving a job at Fredo's where he now creates menu items there at Fredo's. He then went on to, excuse me, the College of DuPage to pursue a culinary program there. We also use the Student Readiness Plan to help students prepare for their college and career explorations after high school. Students are allowed to put in up to four career options that they're thinking about after high school, as well as two college majors, and if they're not sure about what they want to do, Zelo is pulled into the Student Readiness Plan and gives them ideas of career clusters to consider. As students pursue different careers and ideas that they have, they can input up to four different post-high school options that they're thinking about and keep track of how their SAT and GPA would allow them to go into those options. A student example for the Student Readiness Plan is a graduate of Conant last year, Kimmy. Kimmy took our Certified Nursing Assistant course, anatomy, medical terminology, and AP Biology. She attended a few career treks, which led to an internship, as well as a paid position at Arlington Pediatrics. Kimmy is now on the pre-med track at the University of South Florida.
Another area that kids are gaining experience is to really decide which career path they would like to take, their college and career major, is the college and career pathway endorsement. And this is something new under ESSA. And one way that students can demonstrate their college and career readiness, which of course is also part of our Summit of Ratings in the future, is to demonstrate, one path is by earning at least a 2.8 on a GPA, having 95% attendance rate junior year and senior year, and of course, earning a college and career pathway endorsement. Now District 211 had been developing college and career pathways for several years now. For the state to come forward and say, "Let's add on that extra level of an endorsement", and really be able to show the colleges and the businesses around that kids can have on their transcript, "I've earned this endorsement based on the coursework and the experiences I have", and really demonstrated, "Yes, this is the career path for me." What is included in this endorsement is, one, an individualized plan. Again, District 211 was ahead of a, ahead of the curve with the Student Readiness Plan. We built in there the components of what would be in the college and career pathway endorsement, this whole idea of streamlining those career-focused coursework and those experiences. The professional learning experiences could include team-based challenges, which you're going to find out about in a second, the career treks that were already mentioned, and the internships. The other component of it is students have to demonstrate they are ready in both English and math. District 211 has several opportunities for students to display this readiness. It could be in a dual-credit course, it could be in an AP course, but it also could be in our transitional math or English course, as well as demonstrating a score on the SAT or the ACT. Now, part of the team-based challenges is something new in the career endorsement. Now, it's not new to our teachers and the fact that we've always put kids in some type of team-based challenge, and many of our team-based challenge happen outside of the classroom. One thing that District 211 is taking a unique stance on compared to other districts in the area is we really want to make sure that all students have the opportunity to complete a team-based challenge. So we're focused on creating these inside the classroom. And one of the first pathway endorsements that we're developing these team-based challenges is in the health sciences. It's one that we've, we have a very strong connection to with our community college and our agencies where our kids are out there. And so we are, our teachers have met together and created team-based challenges in anatomy, physiology, and CNA. And each team-based challenge builds upon the previous one. So within the team-based challenge, obviously, students have to work as a team, but they are given some type of industry problem that is related to their area of interest or their career endorsement area. Then on top of it, they must work with an industry mentor at some point. Now, we've seen this in the incubator classroom, but now with this endorsement, it'll be across multiple pathways. So for example, in anatomy, physiology, the teachers there have chosen to focus on the cardiology unit to start putting their first team-based challenge. So they looked at various case studies that related to the heart, and the students are presented with different statistical information, heart rate, blood pressure, temperature, all different things where students have to decide on that first diagnosis. Then the next day, they're given a little bit more information. What was the patient doing the day before? How were they handling it? What activities were going on in the next day? And during that process, the teachers are bringing in a industry expert. This could be somebody who works at a hospital, it could be a respiratory therapist, it could be a cardiologist, but an expert is coming in to answer questions for students as they're trying to figure out what's going on to form a diagnosis and to give a recommendation of a care plan. Now, on top of that, the culminating activity too is for all the schools participate in live from the heart, which is where students watch a live open-heart surgery and through their experience with the case studies and what they learned, then watching live from the heart. The students are able to ask the surgeon, the anesthesiologist, the nurses, while they're performing the surgery, any questions, really allowing the kids to tie what they read, what they've learned, along with what's actually happening in front of them. Students are gaining those experiences to really make this decision, "Is this where my passion lies? Is this what I want to do?". From anatomy, physiology, and going on to their CNA experiences senior year, it was important for the team-based challenges to not just include what the students were able to digest and information and then draw conclusions from, but also have the students really understand from the patient perspective. Because within this, they felt that it was very important that if they're going into a field of patient care, that they understand. So we've added extra layers to the simulations and case studies. So now the students will also, in the teams, one of them will have the opportunity to experience some of the experiences the patient might have. So for example, there's goggles in the kit for the students to understand what cataracts might be, even, you know, at their age, or to understand what arthritis feels like. There is apparatuses in there that allow the students to feel how, what a challenge it is maybe to manipulate with their hands, to do basic tasks that right now we are able to do. And then after they experience those things, again, the case studies of finding out the different heart rate, blood pressure, what's going on in their life, get the experts to assist them in understanding. That next level then, there is a simulation lab at Harper where they're able to work with a mannequin in a room, where the teacher is outside, giving the mannequin different symptoms, where then the students have to respond to and really have that authentic learning experience. learning experience while they also have medical experts in the room. And so all the students are able to see this simulation, see this industry problem, see this practical experience, and then they debrief afterwards with the medical expert so they can really go through, here's what you went through, how did you experience it? And then too, the industry mentor can bring in what they have experienced over their lifetime. Again, we are creating incredible opportunities for students that really allow them to experience what they're going to see in the work world in their college and career majors and determine and confirm, this is what I want to do.
As we continue on to add to our career development experiences, at the bottom of this slide, you'll see our next setup. Our student pathways connections will go into Phase Two. Excuse me. We will develop an efficient and family-friendly marketing system in order for our information surrounding our pathways to be more accessible to both our students and our parents. Faculty externships. As much as we would love to get all of our students out into the workplace, whether it be through an internship or some other experience out there, we know it's not necessarily realistic with their schedules, as well as opportunities for them to get there. Faculty externships allows us to put our staff members out into the industry, seeing some of these real problem-solving situations, working with the professionals, networking, and then being able to bring that back into their classroom for a greater experience for our students based on what they're experiencing out in the industry area. Our ESSA accountability. Our career development experiences, as Danielle said, are part of our college and career readiness indicators. The percent that the state has assigned to this for our accountability factor is similar to both the SAT and the science performance standards. They are sending us a strong message that we have to make sure that our students are well-rounded, not only within their SAT scores, but also within their experiences within high school that are preparing them for their choices afterwards. And then finally, the endorsements that Danielle has gone through for us. We are one of the pilot districts creating the first endorsement setups. And the state is tapping on our shoulder because they know how advanced our path work and our career development experiences are. We will be putting one of the first endorsements to the state for their approval and then we will start moving through different areas to offer the endorsements to our students. We continue to transform our opportunities for our students because we know the options that are out there for them in their world are continually changing also. And at this time, we'll answer any questions that you might have.
So I had a couple as I was watching through. For Zelo, I know that when we're tracking Target for the four options that Mr. Brown was discussing, there were options for college, companies, military. How do we handle somebody who may be thinking they want to be a carpenter and work for a skilled trade, or let's say they just want to be an entrepreneur and they don't really fit into what might be tracking? How do we assist them through that planning?
Sure. Great question. I think we adjust our services towards whatever the students' needs are and whatever their plan is for after school. We have connections with local trades if a student is thinking about going that route. And then we have different options for students that are looking to pursue the entrepreneurship route and start their own business. Even at Conant High School, February 7th, we'll be hosting a tech and trade fair where we have two-year or less-type programs such as the trades coming in to talk about those options.
I also have a few questions. So I'm, you know, when I look at the pathways that are offered, and I'm really excited, of course, about the CNA option, but there are a lot of other related careers that CNA isn't really, it's kind of like side-relevant, but it's not really relevant. And some of those careers are some of the fastest-growing in the country, you know, when we're talking about elderly care, personal care assistance, disability service assistance. And so, you know, as part of the presentation, you said that these things aren't static. They're always trying to evolve to accommodate what is a very fast-changing career environment. So I'm wondering if you'd tell me a little bit more about that process, you know, because so much work goes into creating what you've already told us about. How then do you accommodate new and emerging careers, ones that are fast-growing that, for example, like a CNA isn't specifically relevant to?
So in the health sciences cluster, patient wellness is one of the pathways. And when we talk about whether they're going in health sciences, going into research and development, going into management, or going into patient wellness, that's the kind of conversations that the career advisors and the counselors are having with them. And what CNA does in twofold. One, it obviously gets them the industry certificate if they want to move forward. So we do have many of our students who come back and tell us while they're in college, getting whatever other degree or certification they might, they're working right then and there for some help. Equally important to that is for students who believe they want to go into the patient wellness side to explore that and to see, do they truly want to be there? In the industry meetings that we had with hospitals, with nurses, with Harper College, with four-year schools, with anybody related to the patient side of health sciences, their advice to us was, get them with the patients, make sure they have a bedside manner, and make sure they like that. And once you have that piece, then they can go on to all these different changing careers. Harper College happens to have a very well-developed health science opportunity for our students in terms of any of these changing fields that are out there for the certificates that are available, and Danielle can kind of tap into those.
I know definitely, they just started their physical therapy. They keep evolving their ER surgical tech, that is a new program they're developing. And what we find with our students in these CNA programs, and we're fortunate that our CNA teachers are also Harper faculty that teach classes at night, so they stay very connected to the emerging programs at Harper. So they're bringing that information back to our students. What I have found from the teachers and their discussions is our students are doing this for that experience, to gain that patient care, but then on top of it, they're then exploring, what are those other opportunities? We just had a student at Conant who went through a career trek, went to Alexian Brothers Hospital, is in the CNA program, and as the head, one of the head of the programs in the meeting was talking, she found the path that she wanted to do. And it was an area that I wasn't even aware of and instantly went to colleges, found which colleges had that degree. So they're constantly getting exposed to what those opportunities are, which is great. And what's even more great, it has become such a strong group because they really finished those three classes together. The students are constantly emailing back their teachers, saying, just thank you, I wanted to tell you what I've been doing. A student just emailed one of our teachers who just finished being, is now certified as an anesthesiologist, and was sharing how his most recent thing was to have a patient go through brain surgery while, you know, while the patient was awake and having that anesthesiology, all stemming from the experiences that started out in this pathway.
Okay. So my next question is, what if somebody wants to do kind of like a blended career? Someone who's interested in both health science and education? I mean, which is kind of how I've made my living.
I'm going to give you an example of my neighbor. She was not sure what she wanted to do, and her senior year, she took the educational internship and she took the CNA program.
And so those opportunities are extended?
They are extended, they coexist. She did both of them and through those experiences, made the decision of which career path. She happened to decide to go into nursing, she's at Western Kentucky, but now she likes the idea of possibly teaching in the healthcare profession. So it finds its way at weaving back. But we, definitely, students can explore and change and go different paths.
As we talk to other districts, whether they be in the, our local region, as well as across the country, especially in the Midwest, we have some consortiums that meet together to talk. There's really two kinds of concepts behind career development. One of them is an academy model, where a student picks, commits, and stays in that academy. That is not us. We are an exploration model. Because we are large, comprehensive high schools, we have the ability to do that. But we encourage, as Jan said, they find something they don't like, we're right there saying, let's talk about something else.
Okay. I have several, I have more questions. So I'd like to know a little bit more, just taking a step back more broadly, whether you think that there are enough career counselors at each school to properly service the students? I mean, so, because this is a lot of work, all of this is a lot of work. So, you know, are we providing good service to our students? Are the people who are in charge of this work at each school overwhelmed? Do we need more staff? I'm just wondering what your impressions are.
We have dabbled in some efficient solutions and we are working hand-in-hand with Harper to, one of the ideas that we're still vetting, let me phrase it that way, is for J.C. to understand every detail of every pathway is impossible. J.C. can have a very good knowledge base of it and he can start initial discussions, but we need J.C. to be connected to the experts so that that person can actually go through and answer the questions, once the student gets further along in their pathway exploration. One of the models that we had tried, and we are still vetting it through Harper, because with the Harper support of the funding, it makes it a little bit more feasible for us, is to actually have transition specialists. So these would be people who, for example, in health sciences, would be able to speak the language of the high school, understanding what we provide, so that they can engage with the student, but also speak the language of Harper College for years in the industry in healthcare. And what that does is it makes us more efficient. To expect one person to do it all, for all students, for all careers, we know that's not realistic.
So then this comes back to like a communication piece, I think, for me too. So I, of course, it makes perfect sense, I like what you're saying. I guess just the issue is, like, this is wonderful, but it's complicated. And so, you know, it's something that you introduced to work on in the future, is how do we streamline and make this information accessible to people? The last time I was at the Parent Connection Committee, one of the, a couple of the parents did say that, you know, they know that the information, this kind of information about scholarships as well is available, but it can be really, really hard to find. And so I think that that's a piece that kind of connects with what we're talking about.
Yes.
And last, two questions, I swear. Can you tell me a little bit more about the endorsement that you said that we're submitting? Because we're a pilot district and we're going to be submitting to the first, I'm wondering which endorsement it is.
It is the health sciences one, that Danielle described. And part of that endorsement includes the team-based challenges that she went into great detail for.
Okay. And then I want also just a little bit more detail, if you could provide it, about the percentage of accountability that you were saying is similar to the SAT and ACT. What exactly does that mean?
I brought that with me.
Thank you.
So the academic indicators for high school will be 7.5 for the English Language Arts proficiency, so that's percent, 7.5% of our accountability factor. The math proficiency is 7.5. The science proficiency is 5%, and the college and career readiness indicators will be 6.25%.
Thank you for that.
I have another follow-up. So obviously, we had success stories before we implemented the Career Pathways Program. So the purpose was to kind of catch more students and introduce them so that, you know, we can engage them with that exploration model. So my question is, what changes have we recognized from before we implemented the program to date? And what corrections have we noticed that we were deficient on that we've made since we've implemented? And then how do we measure that? So if we were, obviously, the typical metric potentially before we did the career portion with the readiness was we were tracking how many students graduated, how many went on to college or were accepted to college, and we'd have that percentage sort of as a metric. So under this model, what is our metrics for success regarding career and college readiness?
So in terms of the tracking piece, certainly what we want our students to do is be able to say what they like and what they don't like. That is important to us, and that's the exploration side of it. In terms of when they graduate from us, the other piece is that they have choices, that they don't feel pigeonholed into either, I can only go to a two-year, I can only go into a career, I have to go to a four-year, that they understand that there are choices for them and they work with their families in order to make those choices. We don't pigeonhole our students freshman year and say, you're in a college track or you're not in a college track. We make sure those opportunities are there. Our challenge is when they leave us. So in the career development experiences, we want them to explore, but what the last thing they write in that student readiness plan for us that we can track may not be what they go into. So we certainly want, we understand kids change their mind. We certainly hope that we have a high success rate in that piece of it, but we also know that's never going to be 100%. Our challenge right now is that we do not have the means to quickly, or I shouldn't say quickly, within probably the first two to three years, we don't have a consistent means to communicate with our kids after they leave us as to how to get that information back. We do have a clearinghouse that gives us some data, but it's not necessarily immediate data. And that is one of the conversations that we have. As I referenced, we have this consortium that we work through in the Midwest that deals with the endorsements and the college and career development pieces. That data piece is one of the conversations we continually have at a high school level. What are some truly effective ways of doing it? Right now, we have anecdotal information from our teachers. So our teachers stay connected to some of their students, but it is not a valid data source because we don't have all of our students. So we need to continue to work for a solution for that.
So there is no measure for success as far as implementing this college and career pathways? It's just to make sure that our students don't leave feeling like they have no options?
No, the 6.25.
Because that's what I heard, I just want to clarify.
That's for success of exploration. I mean, how do you measure success of exploration? You give them the opportunity to explore and you make sure they take that piece of it. And then you see that they made their steps when they leave us. In terms of actual accountability for college and career readiness, the state has set that up for us. That's the 6.25% that I indicated. Danielle showed the endorsement requirements that include GPA, attendance, and an endorsement. There's another pathway for students to be deemed college and career-ready by the state in order for us to be deemed successful with that student. And that deals with their GPA, their attendance, their English and math readiness, just as it is in the endorsement. But then the state also gives us a list of 10 factors and the student has to complete at least, I believe it's three of those, in order to be deemed college and career-ready. So that's our accountability factor to make sure that our students are college and career-prepared.
Thank you.
I have some comments and then a question at the end. First of all, wow. I'm impressed every time we get an update, which seems to be like quarterly, on what's going on with college readiness, career readiness, student readiness, all the different programs that are going on, and wow is what comes to my mind. I'm glad to have been able to help open the door with one of our partners, one of our business partners with my previous employer, and I've since moved on to a new employer. And Jan, you and I'll talk about some possible, some opportunities there. I also was very pleased to see career readiness represented at college night at our college fair and have a table and counselors there to talk about things other than college at our college night. So that was, that was very nice and refreshing too. What's interesting is, is those of us who were recently elected, or elected this past year, we all talked about the importance of career readiness. So it's good, very good to see how we're continuing to evolve and grow that area in support of our students and the options and choices that they need and want. Regarding postgraduate information, I guess this is a two-part thing. One is, my high school has a very wonderful and strong alumni association and great ways for them to communicate. In fact, I was just on there over the weekend, trying to keep track of where everybody is from my class and others, once I was registered in there a couple of years ago, now I can, I can see more information. And I was wondering if that was something that we have or we may have by school to be able to not only communicate with the students, because I get a lot of stuff from my previous high school, but also to be able to keep track of their careers, their successes, and also it helps them keep in touch with each other. I know that my children, one of them who has graduated some time ago from 211, feels that's something that may be missing. And I was wondering if there's thoughts and plans around doing something like that.
Jan and I discussed that at our last meeting.
I've been wanting one of those for a long time because I think alumni would give back and help with these things that we need, mentors, and so, yes, we.
And our extended connections with businesses. Sometimes the internship cell is not an easy cell. And when you have someone who has graduated from our schools and has a local company, the cell becomes significantly easier in terms of them giving back. So there are a lot of opportunities for there to tap in, to get that system organized and efficient, not only for tracking data, but also for helping us with some resources to fill some gaps that we have.
Thank you. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that will bring us to our consent agenda. We have an interest in separating out Item G to be dealt with separately. So our first suggested motion is going to be the approval of the consent agenda. After the removal of Item G, the resolutions authorizing intervention in proceedings before the State Property Tax Appeal Board be approved. Consent agenda with the removal of Item G be approved as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I'm the, I'm the person, I'm sorry.
We're on, we're on, we're not on Item G yet. We're on the rest of the consent agenda. Anything else, though? There, okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. Okay, now the suggested motion is the approval of the resolutions authorizing intervention in proceedings before the property, the State Property Tax Appeal Board be approved as presented. Can someone please move that?
I saw move.
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, but I do want to discuss it briefly because there's a lot of detail here. All of us are familiar with the property tax appeal. And this is sort of a step beyond that that commercial businesses tend to take. It's a bit of a double-edged sword. If the taxes, if the assessments are too high on businesses, they leave town. And if they're too low, we have to pay, we pay for it, okay? It's a zero-sum game. So that's kind of a philosophy. Looking at the detail, and it was a lot of detail there, and I appreciate the detail. There were like 20 pages. It looks like each business was asking for about a 20% reduction in their assessment. I wish I could get a 20% reduction in my assessment. And the Board of Review has already made a second decision. You know, the county assesses the property, and then it goes to the Board of Review. And then there's a third step, which I guess we could all take, by getting it, getting it assessed and then going back into, into the, into court. So a couple of questions. Are the, number one, because, because the, the appeal is still in motion, and these appeals were filed on the 2018 taxes, are the businesses that are appealing, are they paying the 2000, at the 2018 rate? Or are they, is it held in advance?
Certainly, the goal for all assessments is that they are done accurately and done in a timely fashion. In this case, when properties are filing a, an appeal with the Property Tax Appeal Board, it is not uncommon for us to see those refunds come in several years after they are filed. So therefore, they are paying the taxes as are calculated for the, that particular tax year. They also can appeal for prior tax years. But, so they are paying that amount. And once the case is settled, then the adjustment would be made at that time.
And then, we're not alone in this. I would ask to, clarification, if District 54 and District 15 partner with District 211 to go through the intervention process and share costs?
We do partner with both districts on, in Schaumburg Township because we tend to have the vast majority of our appeals come from that area with the greater commercial business sector. We do have a consortium that is, includes the vast majority of the municipality agencies and including park districts, library boards, village, et cetera.
And they're sharing in the cost.
They are sharing in the cost. We share in the legal fees as well as any appraisals or any other evidence that may be.
Thank you.
Was there another, any question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. That will bring us to special reports. First, we have Freedom of Information Act requests. And the next item is our Winter Curriculum Committee Report. We have a suggested motion that the curriculum committee report and recommendations be approved as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion here? Roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. Next item, we have an informational report, Secondary School Cooperative Risk Management Program. And finally, we have Community Connections Newsletter. That will bring us to unfinished business. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education schedule regular board meetings to begin at 6:30 p.m. for the purpose of entering closed session in the G.A. McElroy Administration Center for Thursday, July 16, 2020; Thursday, August 13, 2020; Thursday, September 17, 2020; Thursday, October 15, 2020; Thursday, November 12, 2020; Thursday, December 10, 2020; Thursday, January 21, 2021; Thursday, February 18, 2021; Thursday, March 18, 2021; Thursday, April 8, 2021; Thursday, April 29, 2021; Thursday, May 13, 2021; Thursday, May 27, 2021; and Thursday, June 17, 2021. Further, that the Board Secretary be directed to post proper notice. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Any discussion here?
I still oppose the 6:30 start time and beginning our board meetings with closed session.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye. Nay.
Thank you.
You asked it in affirmative.
That will bring us to new business. First, we have bid for consideration buses. Suggested motions that the Board of Education award the business for buses for the Transportation Department to the lowest responsible bidder. Central state's bus sales in the amount of $1,310,340.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion here. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. That will bring us to our student user fees for the 2020-21 year. Suggested motion that for the 2020-20-21 school year, the student textbook instructional supply fee remain at $170. The driver education behind the wheel fee remain at $400 for the regular school year. The student parking user fee remain at $75 per semester. And under 1.5-mile transportation fee remain at $200 per year. That the late fee, the late registration fee for the, for transportation remain at $35, and that the late fee be imposed on registration payments received after July 1, 2020. The price of a standard school breakfast be set at $1.65 for students, and that the reduced-price standard school breakfast remain at 30 cents for students. That lunch prices be set at $2.55, $2.85, and $3.10, including milk, for students. And that reduced-price standard school lunch remain at 40 cents, including milk, for students. And that all other summer school fees remain unchanged as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
I apologize for this. I just thought of it. Now, I would like to move that this be tabled and brought to the finance, the Budget and Finance Committee. My rationale is this. I, $6 million in fees is what we are essentially getting from this. The district has, sorry to beat the drum, $17 million in a pending sale, $6 million, I'm sorry, $5 million to IMRF and an $8 million budget surplus. I think we can afford to absorb some or a significant portion of the fees and not charge the families. I mean, if you think about it, $6 million a year divided by 12,000 students is roughly $500 per student, per year, per family. So it's a significant amount of money. And I think, I think we can pay for a lot of this stuff. I don't think we, we have to, we don't think we have to impose these fees. And I don't, this is not the place to really discuss it. I'd like to get into the detail.
Maybe we could start with, there was a motion to table. Is there a second for that motion?
Put it in committee.
There is no second. The motion fails. Is there any other discussion here? Roll call, please.
I, excuse me, point of order. Maybe I misspoke. My, my motion is to, is to defer this to committee, which is different than tabling.
Okay. Table to a time in the future, after the committee meeting. There was no second for that.
You, you misspoke my motion. My motion is to defer this and place it in committee.
I agree. There was no second for whatever motion you made. Now, roll call, please.
Want to make discussion?
I'm sorry, I'm confused. I'm confused about this. So, so the motion to move it into committee, the committee would discuss and approve or not approve, or just discuss?
To discuss the necessity to actually impose $6 million of fees. I think that, that, and I would like to do that in committee because it may be an involved discussion rather than, than at the board table.
Okay, and so then after the Finance and Budget Committee discusses it, whatever this discussion produces then comes back for a vote?
For a vote, yes.
Yeah, so that's what you're proposing, right? In that case, I would second.
Thank you.
I know it seems a bit late, but I am, to be honest, this was difficult for me to follow.
Okay, so discussion, then.
Is there a timeline in which we're restricted to that we have to make a decision tonight? Or can it go to the next Finance and Budget Committee meeting, which will be in February? And then to the board meeting following that for a vote on whatever comes out of that?
We are beginning to build the components for the budget for the coming school year, and this allows us to anticipate those, those fees. Lauren, you can speak to the particular timing or the, sort of the length of the runway. This is a, sort of the starting block for us.
I'm actually going to defer to Mark to possibly walk us through the registration process and the setup on, with that timeline.
We are preparing for school registration for the coming summer. Our materials are being developed right now and require knowledge of the structure so that we can be ready to communicate to families in a timely way.
So do we have enough time to?
To do this in February.
Do this in February.
Part of the hesitancy, my part, is that it requires programming by our technology staff. And I'm a little less technical than many of those people in order to know the complexity of rushed completion.
So far, you're talking about summer school, however. So it is possible to partial out the summer school fees versus other fees. I suppose you could.
I would agree with that.
Fathom that possibility, right?
That's possible to do that, sure.
I guess my, my concern in regards to this, I know over the years, we've talked about this. And I've been an advocate of keeping the costs reasonable for, for our families. Many of these fees, like the driver's ed, end up being waived for students that are on free and reduced lunch. So we know that they're taken care of. I'm really hesitant to start decreasing these because, just because we have some money in, in our working cash funds. That money is spread out and looking forward to capital improvements, life safety, a variety of things. And if we were to start cutting back on these things and then suddenly have to start charging higher amounts, I think that adds to confusion in, in the community. I'm very pleased that we're able to maintain the same costs as we, you know, we have for the last couple of years. I think we've been very frugal. We've kept our costs much less than some of our neighboring school districts. So I think that's been a benefit to the community and our members who do pay these fees. So I'm not in favor of tossing this, you know, back to the Finance Committee. I think we've looked at it. We've had some information in regards to it. And I think we need to move forward because of scheduling or things of that nature. And I think these fees are reasonable.
I personally believe that I pay a very high tax, and then I pay a user fee on top of the tax that I'm already paying. And I think Mr. Kramer's suggestion that spreading some of these fees across the tax base might be of benefit to some of the families that have to pay these user fees. And I have no objection to exploring that.
And I guess the question I would have, then, is if you were to decrease some of the fees, how do you make certain that it goes to the family that's paying the fees and not to the family that's having all these fees waived?
I don't, I don't know if that's really our responsibility. I'll trade you. We keep the fees if you guys will lower the property tax below the CPI cap. I got to pay for it either way. Actually, I'm paying for both.
I think, I think, so, so the real question here, right now, is whether this gets delayed and put into committee. And then the question is whether or not moving it to the February committee meeting and the February board meeting for a vote will allow enough time to implement it. The, the year that, the timeline that we're talking here, to have it in effect, does that include the summer? Or is it starting with the fall semester?
The proposal right now is for this coming summer and this coming fall.
Okay.
Is there any way deferred? I mean, do the summer, but not defer this to the fall, then? I mean.
Yeah, let me, the answer is, I believe there would be in terms of the registration timing.
Okay, so the question is, can we have a proposal, a motion, to, to, can, okay, so.
It would be, it would be an amendment to the current motion.
Amendment, can I amend Mr. Kramer's motion that this recommended action be for the 2021 summer school season or session that the rest of this motion is effective?
I'd like to make a comment, not to interrupt the particulars of, of very precise motions. So I, I do appreciate the effort on that. I believe it was two years ago, we did a comprehensive review of student fees. We had not changed student fees for ten years. At that time, following the comprehensive review, we adjusted, I want to say it was three different fees and they went up nominally. So I, I'm just interested to know what is it, what is it that the board would seek for the finance meeting in three weeks that would be something different than listing what the comparatives are in our neighboring districts?
In, in my mind, Superintendent, it's, it's this. I wasn't here two years ago. I, what I would ask for would be what, it's a what if. If, what if we didn't charge fees? Or what, what, I mean, I, I can understand charging for lunches, okay? Maybe not driver's ed and some of the other stuff, okay? Some, some of the fees can be reduced. I'm not, I'm not asking to keep them level. I'm asking to eliminate the fees as much as we can. And that's, that's, that's a what if.
And so the information that you would like our team to bring in, Mr. Kramer, what, what would that, what would that be?
What if, what is the impact of, of eliminating the student fees in each one of these categories?
We would have to pay for it out of other funds.
And, and my position is we have the money to, to do so.
I think there's a lot of complicate, okay, we're in discussion still, right? So we're, there's a lot of complications that go around with doing that. For instance, driver's ed. There are opportunities and availability for students to take driver's ed through our school and we charge a fee for that. There are other students and families who either because of class schedule or their availability are not able to participate in what we offer as a school district. So then they have to go outside of that and pay a fee. So there's a difference there for a family and it, it may be simply because of the student's schedule that they're not able to do that. And should we, as a result, pay for those students who can because of the student's schedule and make families who can't because of the student's schedule, which is not the family's fault, pay a fee for that same service? So there's a, a lot of different nuances that come into play when we, when we start to carve things out on such an individual basis. At least that's my opinion.
So further discussion. The one hundred and seventy dollar registration fee, how is that set? Is that just to offset staff costs, which we would pay even if we had one student register?
So the school code allows us to charge for the consumables. Our, our student fee is extremely reasonable. It is among the lowest that you can find. So our student fee is been maintained at a very low level deliberately through, through the work of this board and, and the vision of wanting to provide that quality service at a nominal fee. So, but it is calculated relative to the consumables, if you will.
Right. And, and when that fee was established, there were paper copies and things like that. Now the registration is mostly electronic where we're either dropping off what we print at home. We're not necessarily picking up a form, taking it to the doctor's office that was printed by the district, right?
We, I believe we did do the precise calculation on the, that why we came up with one seventy and we can provide you some of that detail. I believe it was in the report, but, uh?
Right, yeah. And, and that's fine, but I think what Mr. Kramer is saying, that, that, that fee could even be lower if we desired it to be.
This board can set it at whatever you would like to set it at.
So I, off, off the cuff, I wholeheartedly agree with you. My concern is that exactly with things like the driver's ed courses that Mr. Rosenbloom already pointed out would be more complicated. Some of the other things that are listed here would be similar. I want more information before I can vote just a flat removal of all fees, which I would love to do. I think that things like student registration and I'm sure that there are other fees there that I agree with you. The district being a very well-resourced district can absorb regardless of class, affordability, class of the students. So in order to vote, to join you on this, I need more information, especially like a, a further breakdown of the fee, the specific fees and then what the effects of that would be in particular with some of the summer courses. So when kids miss the courses during the year and then have to register for summer school, we can absorb those two things to do with scheduling. Whereas I think it's a very simple, when we talk about student registration, yes, I, I think that we're a well-resourced district and we can afford that absolutely. So I need more information on these specific fees before I can do what my first instinct would be to do and that's to vote, to agree wholeheartedly, if that makes sense.
I can summarize what I thought I heard you say. So you'd like a breakdown of the fees and then the impact of?
If we're going to, if we're going to talk about this, and I think that the timeline is pretty obvious that we're going to, like, just for time's sake, we need to approve summer school as it's set out herein. But in terms of maybe the next school year starting in the fall, I think that if, since we have the time, we can certainly ask some of those what if questions about the fees. But I need, I need to look more carefully at the information that we've already been given with a new lens now from the one that I've been looking at earlier this week, if that makes sense.
Sure. And we're, we're glad to do whatever would be helpful. We did present the information in December and we, we do that so that we have a double aware, you know, what we call a double, so that people have awareness. And we're glad to run whatever analyses would be helpful.
I recognize this is a surprise.
We, we did, you know, that was, that was our attempt.
I apologize for the surprise. That, there was much more detail of, in, for, for this item than, than there was in December and I think we were busy on other stuff. So I, you know, I should have asked the questions then, but I had, there's a lot more detail
Sure.
now.
If, if that's what we're going to do, then I think you need to break it down.
So what we're going to do is to get information at the next Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
Right. But I think that part of that information needs to be, what are the costs for free and reduced? That, I don't know if the school gets reimbursed for some of these things or they don't get reimbursed. And then what does the remaining population have to pay and how much would come back into the district, you know, from those fees? And if they were to be decreased, any of them, how do we, how do we pay for it, you know, some of the other items then? I guess just kind of keeping in mind, you know, what, what are the whole, all of the costs involved? Because you've got salaries, that's not going to change. You've got staff. You've got the consumable materials. So, and also kind of keeping in mind, what's our projection for the next number of years because of some of the capital improvements and where we need those funds to have in our working cash?
Sure. As, as you know, in an organization this size and so many facets and even just so many different funds, the pieces are many, many. So it's sometimes tempting or easy to, it can appear easy on the surface to look at one little corner of something and want to focus on that. But it does have implications for the overall complexion. So I, I think you're right in talking about the, you know, where, where does the impact happen. I would just, I'll provide one other qualifier is that there are some very particular rules that pertain to the National Meals Program, for instance, and that's really one of our largest reimbursement programs, if you will, that, that is relative one to the other of the economically disadvantaged and those who, who, who are not. So, and we can go into more detail and explain that about why we set the rates, but those are done with very tight calculations and precision, if, if I could just offer that as assurance to people. So I have about four or five items and, uh, so then would the plan be to discuss that at the, the February sixth Budget and Finance Committee meeting?
Don't we need to vote?
Oh, yeah, we're not there. If we could, Sally, are you clear on what the motion is?
Okay, um, let's see. Mr. Kramer moved that this be brought to the Budget and Finance, be tabled and moved to the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. That's what I'd heard.
Okay.
Okay?
And then, and then I-
There was a component to that with summer school. I don't know what-
Right. And then I, I made a motion to amend Mr. Kramer's motion to approve the fees as presented for this coming summer school session and that the rest of the motion for the, beginning in the fall for the two thousand, twenty-one school year be moved to the Budget and Finance Committee meeting for further discussion. So that we would approve as is for summer.
So that, in summary, then it could be we are approving which ones, Mr. Rosenbloom?
The, the two thousand, twenty, twenty, twenty-one summer school student fees as presented.
And? Twenty, twenty.
It's just twenty, twenty.
Oh, just, twenty, twenty summer, summer school session as presented.
And postponing the rest until after the Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
In February.
Correct.
So do you have a second?
Second?
Yeah, I, I think we're all okay on, on that.
Okay.
Did I hear a second?
Yeah.
Ms. Cavell, by chance?
Yeah, Ms. Cavell?
That was a friendly amendment. I don't think anybody's opposed to that. But yes, now, so now Sally, could you read back the full amount of that?
Okay, let me see. So it includes moving that this be brought to the Budget and Finance, tabled and brought to the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. But then it was amended to, um, let's see, approving the two thousand, twenty summer school, uh, if, summer school fees as presented.
Yeah, so-
Is that how I?
Let's just reverse the order. So we are approving the two thousand, twenty summer school fees as presented and postponing the rest until after the next Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
Until after. Thank you. Thank you.
Everyone's clear?
Yeah.
Everyone agrees?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, roll call for the-
Amendment.
The, the, the motion, the amended motion, the new amended motion to both approve a portion of this and postpone a portion of this.
Okay. Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Nay.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
No. So that motion carries. Okay. That will bring us to, before we leave that totally, Dr. Cates, you're clear with what the board expects at the next Budget and Finance Committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And if not, I will pester you.
Thank you.
And I'm available also, sir.
Okay, that brings us to proposed policy revision, medication administration in schools. Any discussion here? All right, that will bring us to board member expenses. Suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the preapproval form for future expense, future expense reimbursement for Robert LaFever to attend the EdRed legislative dinner meeting on January twenty-seven, two thousand, twenty, as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. Next item is potential topics for future discussion. That will bring us to committee reports. First, we have Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization. Mrs. Klimkowitz?
I was not able to attend, so I don't have a report.
Okay, thank you. And that will bring us to Education Research Development Legislative Report. Mrs. Klimkowitz.
And EdRed, there was, there was no meeting this month and it'll be the dinner on the twenty-seventh.
All right, thank you. That will bring us to announcements. Questions about these items. We have, all right, we have completed our closed session. We have completed our return to open session. So I believe all, all we have left are the final motions. First suggested motion that the closed session minutes of June twenty, two thousand, nineteen, August fifteen, two thousand, nineteen, September nineteen, two thousand, nineteen, October two, two thousand, nineteen, October seven, two thousand, nineteen, October ten, two thousand, nineteen, October fourteen, two thousand, nineteen, October fifteen, two thousand, nineteen, October seventeen, two thousand, nineteen, October twenty-four, two thousand, nineteen, and November fourteen, two thousand, nineteen, no longer require confidential treatment and are to be approved and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. Next, we have our administrative appointments. The suggested motions that effective July one, two thousand, twenty, Michael Alther be appointed as the principal at Hoffman Estates High School at a gross salary of one hundred, sixty-seven thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. Next, we have a suggested motion that effective July one, two thousand, twenty, Brian Harland be appointed as the principal at Schaumburg High School at a gross salary of one hundred, sixty-seven thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. Next, we have a suggested motion that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of Becky Lee Karnes, effective May, two thousand, twenty-four, according to the master contract of the District Two-Eleven Teachers Union. John Gianopoulos, effective June, two thousand, twenty-one, according to the master contract of the District Two-Eleven Operations Maintenance Group. Theodora Gianopoulos, effective December, two thousand, twenty-two, according to the master contract of the District Two-Eleven Operations and Maintenance Group. David Graberek, effective December, two thousand, twenty, according to the master contract of the District Two-Eleven Teachers Union. Barbara Kelly, effective May, two thousand, twenty, according to the master contract of the District Two-Eleven Teachers Union. Rosaria King, effective May, two thousand, twenty, according to the master contract of the District Two-Eleven Teachers Union. Violetta McAllister, effective December, two thousand, twenty-two, according to the master contract of the District Two-Eleven Operations Maintenance Group. Karen Senney, effective December, two thousand, twenty-two, consistent with the master contract of the District Two-Eleven United Support Staff. And Claudia Savada, effective December, two thousand, twenty-two, consistent with the master contract of the District Two-Eleven United Support Staff. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. Is there anything further?
I would just request that in the future, that when we're voting on items publicly from closed session, that we allow for discussion. We roll right into a vote without any discussion on any of the motioned items. Thank you.
Always, sure. Was, uh, there any discussion for any of the items tonight?
Uh, from my perspective, I just wanted to commend future Superintendent Dr. Small for her selections on our principles and doing the due diligence with five different steps to narrow it down and, and come up with the best candidates.
Good. Anything else? All right, we are adjourned.